And I'll call to order. The budget work session of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Monday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen at six P M. Roll call please.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
I'd like to remind to everyone that the purpose of tonight's meeting is for the Board of Commissions to study issues, to gather and analyze information, and to clarify questions. No votes are conducted during the work sessions. No public comments will be allowed tonight on the budget. However, it will be allowed during the two public hearings that we have scheduled for Wednesday, September fourth, and Tuesday, September seventeen, at six thirty P M. In the last two budget work sessions, we covered a lot. On the first budget session, which was on July sixteen, we discussed the General Fund and the Enterprise Fund. On the second budget session, we discussed the C A P, the C R A salaries. We also discussed the follow-ups from the first session. Tonight, we'll be discussing follow-ups and finish up the budget to be ready for the public hearing scheduled for September fourth and September seventeen. And the first item on the agenda tonight is follow-up discussion for August twelfth work session. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Licorice.
Ron, will you give a brief update of the worksheet we have here and where we are to discuss tonight?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director. As you say, we're in the third budget work session for the fiscal year two thousand twenty budget. And we just have the one slide here, and I tried to put the hand out in front of your, in your desk there so my, if it's easier to see that way. But I'll just go over where we left off from, from the last budget workshop. We had some capital items. Hibiscus Road Stormwater Improvements, it was consensus to move it from the Penny Fund, one hundred and twenty thousand, leaving, splitting it half and half, leaving sixty thousand in the Penny Fund and sixty thousand was going to the Stormwater Fund, since it involved the Stormwater Fund. We had Extend Pinellas Trail, it was a consensus, it was all in the Penny Fund before, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, three oh nine. It is now split between the Penny Fund, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six fifty-five. And the other portion is Recreation Impact Fund, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six fifty-four. Shuffleboard Courts, it was a consensus, it was in the Recreation Impact to take it out, the fifteen thousand. The Prius, it was a consensus, it was in the General Fund, but in the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, twenty-five thousand, it was eliminated from the budget. And then going to the C R A, we had the Plan Update, it was consensus, it was budgeted seventy-five thousand, we reduced it to twenty-five thousand. So that leaves a balance available for C R A projects of fifty thousand dollars. And then we got down to the unfunded list, and these are items that B L C would like to see funded. We had money available of one hundred and twenty-five thousand. We have what we put it towards, was youth foot, what was requested was youth football sponsorship, ten thousand. Restrooms at Downtown Dock's magnetic locks, ten thousand. City Hall Auditorium carpet replacement, fifteen thousand. Safford House paint exterior, replacement of cabinets and door replacement, ten thousand. Heritage Museum paint, exit door bars, kitchen replacement flooring, twenty thousand. Cultural Center plaster repair, painting of interior, twenty-five thousand. Cultural Center exterior lighting, five thousand. Safford House electronic gates, ten thousand. Website improvements, ten thousand, and tablets for B O C, ten thousand. And that totaled one hundred and twenty-five thousand of the available, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Other items mentioned but not funded is Sunset Beach sand replacement, ten thousand. Citywide Playground Rehab Program, fifty thousand. Decorative lights, signs, other beautification citywide, fifty thousand for a total of one hundred and ten thousand. And then down below on the bottom left, we just mentioned again, we, the millage rate was reduced from five point four-two to five point three-seven. That's a realization of eighty-eight thousand, seventy-nine reduction. And just as a reference, millage rate reduction per every point zero one is seventeen thousand, seven fifty-nine. And then going up midway to the top right portion there, funding request, request for funding. We, homeless leadership, five thousand dollars. Neighborly, no stated amount. Family Center on Deafness, one thousand. And then additional commission requests, Spun the Stocks facade grants between thirty thousand to forty-five thousand. And that's where we left it off at the previous budget workshop.
And the only addition to that is tentatively, I allocated that extra fund for the Pinellas Trail. I put that to go towards the Sponge Dock entranceway sign. Again, that's tentatively, again, that's something for, you know, discussion tonight. But that's where I put that, the fund. And again, those other cat, those are not set, the ones in the one twenty-five. So anything from any of those other categories or any addition can be moved in, and something from this column can be moved out. And I think that's the purpose, is meaning to finalize it and finally place and get consensus of what items to go in the budget and what to go on our wish list to do at a later time.
Pinellas Trail, we had two seventy-one and one hundred and thirty-five and one hundred and thirty-five. One hundred and thirty-five was from Penny Fund, the other from Recreation Fund. Are you saying you're taking the hundred, you're suggesting to take the one hundred and thirty-five thousand out of, off of that?
No, the, that saved one hundred and thirty-five of the, of the Penny Fund.
Of the Penny.
That saved it.
The extra we had, okay.
I tentatively in its place to use that for was the Sponge Dock. But we don't know, we don't have any idea what it's going to cost now, right now. But I, I put that as a placeholder for us funding, because I think that's something the Commission wants to get done as fast as possible. So that's why I utilize that money to put towards there. Whatever left there doesn't cost that much will be more available penny money.
Yeah, okay. Well, we can take one item at a time and then make sure that we all have, we have consensus and we agree with that. The, the Hibiscus Road and Stormwater Impact, we already got consensus for one hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, the first four.
Any other questions on that? We okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Everybody's okay with it? Okay. And the extended, the Extend Pinellas Trail? One hundred and thirty-five thousand from Penny Funds and Recreation Fund, one hundred and thirty-five thousand. If Bud's okay with that? Okay. And of course, we, we're on, you guys want to talk anything about Shuffleboard and the car? No? Okay. If we move down to the C R A, any questions on that?
I've got a, yes.
I've got something on the trail too, Mayor, depending on how you want to, I mean, not on the trail, on the.
Where?
Sponge Dock thing, which is relative to what you're talking about.
The one hundred and thirty-five dollars, yeah, we can, let's talk before we go to the C R A then.
All right.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Okay. Uh, I just.
C R A.
I just thought that it was a, a good, a good, a good placeholder, a worthy, obviously, a project that's relative to what we're talking about and a good place to stick the money. I just don't know that it's going to cost us one hundred and thirty-five thousand for the entryway. So I mean, I know that it's an, an as need, but I mean, you know, being that it is, we're going over this budget pretty much line item by line item, I would just propose something that we maybe thought would, it would come in it and then reduce the additional monies by that. I mean, if we all thought that we would budget a hundred grand for it, then we could take, you know, another thirty-five thousand dollars out of the budget. So I mean, I know that we can then go back and get the money if we need more, but I mean, you know, one hundred and thirty-five thousand for a project that we all want, but we just don't really have an idea of cost for, why leave such a big placeholder? You know what I mean? So, I mean.
I could go.
Reduce it to a hundred thousand.
Yeah, I could, I, I would go with a hundred.
Okay. I don't have any idea what it's going to cost, I don't think any of us does.
Me neither.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Sorry. What about budgeting one hundred and thirty-five, and if we don't use it, then it can go to somewhere else?
Well, that, I mean, that would be ultimately what would, what would happen. But I mean, being that we're, you know, literally going over the budget, if we thought that it was a hundred, why not budget a hundred? You know what I mean? And then ultimately, the thirty-five is basically still there, it's just not, you know, it's just not holding that place.
Yeah, it's just really important that we get that done.
Oh, I'm with you, yeah, I totally agree.
I think everybody wants it done.
Yeah, no doubt.
Uh, Mark, how did you come up with one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars? Was any reason behind that or?
It was just a, it was a difference to. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, it's, it's going to be what this board decides the sign looks like, the price. So this, this board's going to decide, and that depends on the price, so.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just want to shed a little light on this one. I don't, just watching what some of the engineering costs have been for like the gateway signs. So just, this is just a rough analysis and based on talking to some artists too, of like what a bronze statue may cost and some other aspects. So the engineering alone is going to be about probably ten thousand dollars, which sounds like a lot to me, but that's realistic from what an engineering study costs for something like this. A full-size bronze statue is about sixty thousand. So if we want to do more than one bronze statue, it's going to be taking up about one hundred and twenty thousand, right? Then you're not talking about if you're doing an archway or not, that's unknown, if we're going to, if that's going to happen, or is this going to be a monument statue on top of a pedestal, that's unknown. So I would say one hundred and thirty-five is actually a number that could be hit pretty quickly with the type of stature that I think the board's been looking for, for this area. So I don't think it's a terrible move to leave one thirty-five in there, but it's valid, because I, I had the same questions with the gateway signs. Because there, when I saw the budget, or when I saw some of the, the costs that came back, I was scratching my head like, that's a ton of money for these signs, but it's something that needs to be done. I think if it was ten years ago, we could do it no problem with seventy-five thousand. But the issue is, I think that the cost of this, the building material and some of the other items, there's just a greater demand for it. So the cost has skyrocketed over the past few years. But I, I think it's a valid point what you bring up.
I don't have an issue leaving it in the budget, excuse, is that our, I don't have an issue leaving it in the budget. I just, I mean, obviously, the better the product, the more it's going to cost. But given the way we, you know, given the way projects go sometimes, I just think that you might see this one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, you know, and it still be budgeted for this coming cycle without having spent the money in the next budget year. So, you know, in which case, it's still holding the place, but, um, you know, it could very easily cost, you know, one hundred and thirty-five thousand. So I'm fine with that, I just thought it would, you know, I'd bring it up just because it seemed like a lot and.
Yeah, I think that's a, a good point, a fair point. But I just think it's something we can revisit when we find out a little bit better idea of how much we're actually going to be spending on it. So I'm going to leave it in there as a placeholder for now.
Yeah. You know, if it's more than we need, we can always, you know, subtract later, but it's okay, we'll leave it, in my opinion.
Fine.
Yeah. Since we don't know exactly what's going to cost, but this is an item that everybody wants to give, to see completed. And maybe another time I talk to you, I, I, I would report to you about my discussion that I had with the owners of Tappus Restaurant, that they're all, they're all in favor of it. Uh, so we okay with that?
I have a question. I just have a question. Since we're talking about entranceways and gates, has that gate for the Sunset Beach, have those gates been funded? I couldn't remember.
Yes, we're just, it's, it's going to cost more because of the, what we're doing, but yeah, that's, that's, that's what we're working on with this.
Funding is there.
With this, with this year, the budget now, not the budget you're doing here for October.
Okay. Okay.
And along with the signs, he meant all those are in this, the ones that we're talking, been working on, the, the gateway sign in the current budget now, not, not the one you have to worry about.
Okay, we'll move on to C R A. We had consensus to fund seventy-five thousand dollars, and Commissioner Carr?
I believe it's, the consensus was to fund twenty-five thousand dollars for the C R A plan update.
Seventy-five was proposed, we agreed on twenty-five.
Which will use the fifty thousand for?
Whatever.
Whatever.
But it's C R A, because it was out of the C R A.
Yeah.
So, a couple of things I wanted to point out, I think you all probably received my email over the weekend or on Friday, I don't remember which day I sent it. Uh, but it was a summary of the discussions under the topic that we had last budget meeting about some alternatives that could be done within the C R A, to try to build up the area, spruce it up some more, put some more character into the downtown C R A district. So just a few things I wanted to touch on again and see if we could come up with consensus to direct the city manager on a route to go. As a reminder, this presentation shows that there's fifty thousand available in this budget cycle because it was reduced for the C R A plan update from seventy-five to twenty-five thousand. But there's still additional funds within the C R A. And Ron, if you mind, do you have that number of?
Ron, you want to go over what we talked about today of what?
Yeah, and what we presented at the last meeting, I think that was asked, at the end of this fiscal year two thousand nineteen, there will be three hundred and twenty thousand available in the C R A, so that's what could be used out of the C R A. The fifty thousand's already in there, there would be an additional three hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay, so if my math is correct, it's three hundred and seventy, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Uh, so that's just a reminder to the board that there's a good amount of money in this fund. It's good to have the C R A build up over the years to do larger projects, but I, I just want to have that as a discussion topic and just kind of get the board thinking as a whole. So the first thing that I, I, one of the items I discussed was an archway over the trail. And my thought was over, it was on the south side of Tarpon Avenue. Something that you, I think Dunedin has something similar, it says Make Freedom Count, I believe, something that can tie in.
Supporting our troops or something like that?
Yeah, supporting our troops, yeah, I think that's what it is. Again, not to be like Dunedin, but I think it's in the, the character of downtown to have something that mimics the, the train station. I know there's a pole that runs vertical off the train station today. Uh, but there's an opportunity that may say, welcome to Tarpon Springs if you're heading from the south on the bike trail. Um, or it could say, I don't know what it could say. But it'd be powder coated of some sort, you could have some railroad sign, signage on there to resemble the railroad and some of the history that it's been there before in the past. So I don't know what that, what that would cost. But I think it would be something that would add character to the district, so I don't know if that, the rest of the board feels that way or not. How do you want to go about, because there's the eight items that I think I sent out, so.
Well, you have a whole list of items there, and some of those things that probably can be done on a daily, you know, daily repairs and operation, like something about the fans and stuff like that. Perhaps Mr. Licorice can look and see and put a.
Well, what I'd recommend is we, that we probably would have a C R A meeting, October or something, we would have a C R A meeting where we could go over and, and discuss that, and you decide as a C R A board, any of the projects you want to start and do.
Yeah, but if you take this list and you just put a, you know, approximately what's going to cost, that way we now, I mean, we have many items here, we don't know exactly what's going to cost, yeah.
What I would propose is I'll address Commissioner Carr's proposal, but what I would say is that on the list that he sent out, if, like, if we focused on what's in this budget tonight as far as what's the next thing for the C R A, like that three hundred and seventy thousand isn't going anywhere. So being that it's for this coming budget year, I think if you did want to have a, you know, an item on the C R A agenda that wanted to address beautifications or just the railroad arm in, in general, that I don't think that there would be any restriction to bringing that forward as like a commissioner initiative, right? So, I mean, but that said, I, I do support it. I mean, I supported it years ago when we looked at it, but I guess it was determined that it was not feasible because of the ramp going up on Tarpon Avenue. But to then, you know, just orient it in another manner to where it goes over the trail and we could still act as the same thing with basically the same feature, then I, you know, I would definitely support that in the future. But sticking it in, in the budget right now, I don't know, you know, being that your list is expansive to sit here and go one by one for tonight, I don't know.
Also have any other items that we need to have some kind of a price tag on it?
Sure, I agree. Yeah, I agree.
You know, that way we know how, how we're going to go buy, if we have enough money to begin with, you know?
Yeah, and that was the idea, just to get some thoughts moving. I, I, obviously, I want to see the funds spent within the C R A to help build the C R A district up further. Uh, I know there's some other projects that we're trying to do around town for beautification and just to make Tarpon Springs more unique and have more character. So that's all this list was really about, from the lights to the signage, and those are things that we've discussed in the past. Uh, but there's one more important thing I, I really think is.
Can I interrupt you one second? And if you could please put a little bit more explanation there, what you want? You said for perks property, what do you really need? I mean, what do you, what do you have in mind in there? You know?
Yeah, I mean, my thought process is just you take the fence down and put some grass out there and you put a, we, we print some large old pictures of downtown or some old buildings, and we just put them up to where people were walking downtown, they could see what downtown used to look like. And also market it, because right now, you, you walk by it, there's got a fence, there's crushed pavement, and it looks terrible and doesn't really add any beauty to our downtown. And then also put a for sale sign out front.
Looking at these, it really doesn't give you the picture what you're talking about, yeah.
So there's no for sale sign out there any longer that says, this is for sale within, within the C R A. If you have an idea, bring it forward to the C R A or the economic developer, and then they'll bring it forward, right? So, I mean, almost every property you drive by that's for sale, you see a for sale sign, right? Um, and that's just common sense one-on-one, I, I would say, for that. But the one thing that's important, and Mayor, I know we touched on it the last meeting, was just a parking garage. And I think it's important that at least we allocate some funds each year.
Keep that thought, we'll keep that later, because I want to talk about that as well. Let's keep that separate, if you will.
Yeah.
Because that's going to take more than C R A if you have it done.
And I agree that, with that, but I know it's.
For a minute?
Sure.
Come back to that if you want.
Okay.
That's okay with you?
That's fine with me. But I'm, I'm happy to have a meeting. Like I said, I know there's been some discussions of things in the past, and we haven't really seen the projects move forward yet. And I'm just looking forward for the projects to move forward, so that's why I was trying to get the, the ball rolling with these. I know we need a C R A meeting to really dig into this further, and I think it's best to do that in that setting. Uh, but since we're talking about budgets and things along those lines, I really think it's, these are some items that could really help benefit Tarpon Springs.
Yeah. There is, I'm telling you to hold on for a minute, because I like to bring the issue about, thinking about the five-year plan, projects. You know, what, what we'd like to see, so.
Yeah, that should probably be a workshop too, of, of discussion, right?
Definitely, definitely has a workshop.
Workshop issue. Commissioner Donovan?
I guess now I just want to know, are we, are we discussing these items tonight, or are these things that we're going to discuss in a work session?
Come back to it with the C R A meeting.
Okay, then I guess I'm good.
Okay.
No, I just want to continue discussing what's on, on the agenda, but definitely come back to that.
I'm looking at the time too, because seven thirty, you got to go. Okay. So now we're going to the General Fund, Balance Unavailable Before Unfunded. So the, the youth football sponsorship, we had a very good discussion, and we allocated ten thousand dollars for that. Everybody's okay with it? Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm good with the, are we going line by, I'm good with the ten thousand, yeah.
Yeah, we'll go line, one line at a time, yeah. Commissioner Seber?
I would just still like to come up with some type of plan for other non-for-profit agencies that are going to come forward, like homeless leadership, other teams, Little League teams. I think that we need to have some kind of plan without just giving money to whoever wants it whenever they want it. I, I talked to some other cities when I was at the leaders, at that conference, League of Cities Conference, and they have plans in place to give, like, for example, the teams a thousand dollars each or, because I worry, like, the letter that we got the day after is that, that other parents will come forward. But not only that, we have to decide what we, we're going to fund and how we're going to do it. Are we just going to give people what they want, when they want it? Are we going to come up with a plan? Because we don't have one right now. We're just, you know, leadership, I mean, homeless leadership board, I was on four years and we gave them five thousand dollars each year, but then we didn't last year, I wasn't on the board, but now they're asking for it again. So what are we going to do to, to have some kind of criteria or plan for how we're going to fund others who come forward?
Well, we have, you know, three other requests, so we're going to.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that we have three other requests, but others could come. So I, I think we need to eventually come up with some type of, of plan of what, how we're going to fund all these different organizations or nonprofits that, that request money from us.
Okay, so.
That's, that's my concern. Well, it doesn't matter what I think, you have consensus for me to have for. But I, I, I said no at the, at the last meeting, so I haven't changed my mind about that.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, I think, I think labeling it as giving money to whoever wants it or breaking it down by each application is somewhat misleading. What happened with the Junior Spongers organization, wasn't them requesting money just like any other nonprofit was? I mean, this was almost, it was an emergency expense. It wasn't like it was them versus any other sports or any, anything like that. I mean, they're defunct, they, they do not have a season this year.
But they're just one organization of, you know, quite a few that may eventually need money from us. So not for this particular case, but, you know, other cases in the future. Are we going to have some type of criteria for how we're going to budget money for organizations like that? Are we going to put fifty thousand dollars aside and say whoever comes to us, you know, we, you know, we have five thousand for you and we have a thousand for you, whatever it is? Or are we just going to give money out every time somebody asks us, even if it's an emergency or there might be another emergency that comes up? I just think we have to have a plan and we have to know what we're willing to budget for, for these types of situations.
I don't think this is giving money to anybody that asks us. I mean, that's why we have these requests for funding, that's why we have these work sessions, so we can go over it tonight. Again, I mean, if, if these are youth programs that are going bankrupt or they're not able to get the registered players, I mean, we'll help other youth programs. I know one of the concerns was, you know, what about the other youth programs? Well, I'm, I'm in constant contact with the other youth sports programs within our city, and they were ecstatic to see us help Junior Spongers. Because they know that we, we do the same, we do the same for them if, if they were ever in danger of that. But I think it's, it's apples to oranges comparing Junior Spongers football, who needed emergency money, to pretty much any nonprofit that might just ask for money or submit an application or anything like that. I, I think they're totally different situations. I think one is an emergency basis for a youth program that helps our community's children, and one could be just any other generic nonprofit. So I think it's, it's different when you're discussing youth programs that aren't affiliated with any schools or anything like that. And I think it's especially different when you're discussing a youth program that is currently canceled.
I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying the way other cities do it, and I did ask several mayors and commissioners, is they have a fund for all youth programs. You know, whether it's an emergency or not, but they just have a fund where they know that they're going to fund so much money or allocate so much money to each youth program, for example. Not talking about other organizations that are coming to us. So, you know, that's just my thoughts. I mean, obviously, the rest of you don't agree with this, so I won't drop it.
Commissioner Donovan, what do you think of?
I, I mean, I, I pretty much said my piece on it at the last meeting. I, I, we remind Commissioner Seber at the last work session prior to our meeting, I did bring up our grant funding that we, that we give. And not our grant funding is in the grants that we get, but what we give back to our community and our nonprofits. And I compared it to several other communities, you know, Clearwater, Pinellas Park, I think I also brought up Dunedin. And, and we were giving less than them to our nonprofits. And I, I'm, I'm not saying that we're just giving money to anybody that asks for it or money to whoever wants it, as you put it. I, I just think in, in terms of priorities, if any youth program is in, in danger of going under, I think that's something we need to step up and fund. And I think, I think in, in terms of deliberating and deciding who gets money, I think these work sessions are exactly why we do that. I mean, our job as commissioners is to discuss and, and make decisions that are tough like that. And I think requests for funding and our process right now of discussing it one by one is, is, is a fine method.
Yeah, I just, I felt that we needed to discuss it at this meeting last Tuesday, at the, at the last board meeting. uh last Tuesday at the at the last board meeting so that we can decide something. Um you know, if you all don't wanna look at funding, you know, all groups, all uh nonprofit uh uh little leagues, um then I I think that would be fair, but uh because other cities do do that, they they have criteria for for funding uh all the little leagues, so.
Again, though, I I do talk to our city's little leagues and I would fund them if if they needed it, but this was an emergency-based funding. It's not something where they were applying for money or it was a competition between the little leagues, I mean, this was an emergency funding. I'm, this wasn't my uh, this wasn't my topic that I brought up, so I'm ready to move on, whatever.
What you take on that?
Yeah, I think we we voted four to one last week on it.
I'll do two.
Can I make a suggestion, Mayor?
Yes.
I think it would be easier for the sake of time, is if you look at the things that aren't funded in this hundred and twenty-five thousand out list that you wanna fund, see if you can get consensus and then replace it in because if you go down through all these and then you get to the ones not funded and wanna put them in, we're going back to these, so I think it would facilitate things, if there's any of these things that aren't in the hundred and twenty-five funding that we identify and then figure where in this list we're gonna replace with and what's the least important to take out. Cause right off the bat, the ten, the Savard House electronic gate, and that wait, so there's ten thousand, you could put something in or you could the board decided, so to me that would be faster to do.
I think it's a good idea, we can do that. Well, uh I'd like to see the city hall auditorium carpet replaced, looks like it needs it. Uh the question that I have, you have fifteen thousand dollars, is that included in the hallway or not?
Out in the foyer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the hallway.
Yeah, but I think that's a different project, we already have got in 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 town's fund, they've already got the the outside the auditorium portion.
Can I ask a question? All these items are funded, right?
No.
No, they're not funded.
They were not funded.
They're being proposed to me.
Okay.
You can move anything from the outside list, you can move in its place and take something out, and that's why I'm saying we should find the things we wanna move in and decide which is the least important to move out.
Well, I think that's very important for us. It it's in that chain.
It's in.
That's one.
But again, the ones that are outside of that one twenty-five that you wanna move into there. And then you figure it then as a consensus, which ones do we take out? I already offered the first one up that we can take out.
Okay. Well, the uh Saffron House painting exterior replacement, I think something like that can wait, wouldn't you think, Mr. LeCours?
Could.
I wouldn't wait on the exterior, I wouldn't wait on the exterior painting, not on not on the wood frame house, I would wait on the gates. I'm right there.
Gate, the gates was the one I would have brought up.
Mayor, there's exterior painting, there's replacement of cabinets and door replacement. I would support the paint of the exterior, but I would not support the replacement of cabinets and door replacement, I'm not sure what the breakout is, the difference is. But I think being in Florida and the issues that we've seen with other buildings that we need to continue to keep paint on the wood buildings.
I'm with you there, I could take out the cabinets and door.
So we have ten thousand dollars on right now, what what the exterior will cost, five thousand?
Maybe, that's our placeholder is.
Maybe we should see if there's a consensus on just painting the exterior and leaving the cabinet doors out.
Yeah.
I I agree.
You agree?
I'd be fine with that.
All right, good.
So we drop it down to five thousand?
Yeah.
I would leave it, well, whatever, I would leave it as is and just tell them that alls we wanna do is paint. Cause it's hard, now we're guessing again on what the budgetary, you know, I mean.
But we need to add some items that are not funded.
Okay, yeah, I guess you take out five then.
And I'll get my paintbrush out.
Uh Heritage Museum painting, again, ex exit door, bar's kitchen replacement flooring. LeCours is counting for that is.
Again, you, I had I had taken all these out of the budget.
You did?
Um the board in talking about it wanting to put back in, so.
Can I say something about that, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, my thing with the Heritage Museum is, and it has been for a long time and we just never got anywhere with it, ten years ago when I was on the Budget Advisory Committee. There's a kitchen in there, right? We're gonna spend twenty grand in there now, after money that we just spent on an air conditioner and you know, stormwater damage and this and that, it's underutilized, it has been for a long, long time. We we have to be start better utilizing that city asset, in my opinion. So I mean, whether we, it's a wed, you know, is available for a wedding venue or whatever the case may be. I, to me, I can't keep on spending good money after bad on something that I don't see being utilized with the exception to a few events here and there that are attended by, you know, not too many. That's that's my perspective, maybe it's utilized more so than I'm thinking, but I mean, to me, there's no reason why we can't better utilize that city facility or building or whatever, especially if we're gonna spend twenty thousand dollars on updating the kitchen and the floors and stuff like that. Now, I mean, I'm happy to discuss that at a diff, you know, not this meeting, but that's just my take on the hea- the Heritage Museum, I wanna take care of our of our assets, but at the same time, when they're un- underutilized, that makes my skin crawl.
Uh I, can I comment on that?
Sure.
Um actually, it is utilized probably more than you know, the TRC meetings are there, you know, there's a lot of organi- not TRC meetings, the um tourist development uh committee meetings, yeah. Uh are are held there, a lot of the organizations like the Women's Club and, you know, some of the Greek associations, there there's quite a few events there, actually. But I don't know that we need to spend the money on that kitchen. Um I've been in that kitchen working, uh maybe we can find the money to do that kitchen later on uh down the road with with our
Originally had taken it out of the budget, so again, you got something else to win there.
Initially, I think that during the last meeting, the discussion, or I was the one that actually brought it up, was the paint and then not to do the exit doors, the kitchen floors at all. Um again, if the exterior, it's if it's mostly wood, um we wanna make sure that it has paint, I'm not sure if the paint proposal is for interior or exterior, it's not specific on this. So if it's for interior, I wouldn't necessarily support the interior paint right now, but exterior, I would support the exterior paint um in that aspect.
Plaster repair and
I think that's the next one down.
Cultural Center.
That's the cultural center, which which is still very
You wanna leave five thousand in there?
Yeah, I think that's fair, yeah.
Instead of twenty, it'd be five.
Then we got fifteen over in this side.
Everybody's okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Now we're going to the Culture Center, the plaster repair and painting of interior. I uh suggested the last workshop that that we need to finish the whole project. So that way we have a finished product with the silverware.
I'm good with that. Nice fresh gun there.
I just wanna make sure that the plaster repair, a certain portion of that isn't covered in our scope of service right now with the window replacement, I'm sure it is. So I don't wanna just budget it twice, you know what I mean? But I mean, the, you know, whatever plaster repair, maybe it's not anywhere
Painting, yeah.
Maybe it's not anywhere around a window that they replaced and it would be on us, then I would be okay with it, I just wanna make sure that we're making sure our contractor contractor is liable for what he signed up for.
We should call, you okay with that?
Uh yeah, is this um this question for the city manager, is this gonna be more of a uh in-house type um worker, is this gonna be a contractor that would
Plus, if we can do it, it's gonna be materials and us trying to do it.
You know, uh we've got some skilled tradesmen that can do plaster and I, it just seems like a lot for twenty-five thousand, right, for interior for plaster and paint, but um I think we could probably get that done for under fifteen at least. But I I support this for sure, I I wanna make sure that that building is we're investing so much in the outside, I think the inside needs to look just as good.
Commission Seaver, you you supporting there?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I I support it as well, I support it as well.
So we'll leave it with twenty-five thousand and if they don't use it, we can always have it. The next one is still with the Culture Center, the uh exterior lighting, five thousand dollars.
I feel that's kinda high, I what, what are we planning there for five thousand dollars?
We can take that out and then
I'd like to, I'd like to, I mean, if you wanna reduce it, I'm fine with that, but I'd like to leave it in, I mean, I think having that big beautiful
Well, no, I I I agree that we need lighting, but I don't know what five thousand dollars is gonna cover, I mean
The the materials in that uh uh not pedestrian lighting commissioner could probably help me, but that stuff's pretty expensive.
The outdoor lighting, if they're bronze, if they're bronze pieces, um
A lot of it has to be underground to get to different places, so.
There is, um
Let's leave the five thousand and if it's too much, we can always come back to that.
I just thought it was high.
But we want to have it done anyway, right?
Right, I mean, I agree that we need it done, I just thought that was high.
Mr. Donovan, you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Um yes.
Yeah. Now we'll go down to uh Saffron House, the uh electronic gate.
Pull it out there. I mean, is the Safford House staff?
Yeah, but again
Daily?
Not all the time, but we're trying to
But it's not open, the gates aren't open if someone's not there anyhow, right? So what do we need electrical gates for?
Well, I've had it on my
Take it off.
Pulled out.
We've got ten thousand dollars there.
I had already marked it off.
You'd already took it out, okay.
Well, again, maybe I misunderstood, maybe it was added in there, I gotta go back and look into me, I heard Safford House, cause I didn't remember it, but so I might have put it in by mistake, thinking we were talking about the Safford House above, so.
The next one is the website improvement, we all know how uh how friendly the website is.
And I'm thinking we just made a hire if he accepts the job um that has some experience to help us too, so that may be more comfortable, we may be able to do it with that, I'm not sure, but we hired somebody and he comes from Full Sail University and they do a lot of that stuff and he did some work for the agriculture in the state on that, so we may have some in-house help with him, except been offered if he accepts the job. Um where I was thinking it's gonna be anywhere, if we can do it to ten to up to thirty, thirty-five or so, then I'm more confident with this hire um that we may be able to do it, um I'm not guaranteeing, but we're gonna, I think we can give it a good try with that.
What department is he in? Is it IT?
No, Cultural Affairs.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Great graphics, great graphics experience and 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 website experience and some other things, so hopefully comes his build.
Well, I think we ought to leave the ten thousand dollars because that can be expensive.
Yeah.
Mr. Carr?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
We're good. Okay. The next is the tablets for B O C.
Yeah, this one I was actually confused about, just um just kinda sticker shock, it's ten thousand dollars for tablets?
Well, you figure you'd have to get myself, one, the clerk, that you for this, but they're gonna be about eleven hundred apiece. So with this was figure on getting like nine or ten of them.
Probably save that in paper over your time.
Yeah.
And staff
I mean, pretty close. Yeah, I mean, Judy's gotta bind everything, it's all gotta be printed.
So this board would, this, everybody stood up, that would have the
There's also the software too that comes along with these, it it is sticker shock, because I I do see some of it from a procurement side at my work. I'm always surprised what some of the software is that goes along with them to be able to to do the fun toys and tools that you need to write on the tablets and the to save it in certain ways and et cetera, but yeah, it's I'm right there with you, but it's
Eleven, it's eleven hundred dollars a tablet?
Yeah.
Wow.
Thousand bucks.
That's crazy.
Yeah, unless you're getting a small one, it's like six inches.
It's a very good price.
Yeah. I thought it was gonna be more.
I I texted
Suzanne got, that's the price Suzanne got us, I thought it was gonna be.
I think ten thousand dollars is not a bad price for it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with it, if that's if that's what it takes, I was just shocked.
I know.
We got thirty K.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
Three thousand is out there up for availability.
Yeah, I got that too, okay.
We got thirty thousand.
Thirty or thirty-five?
Okay, now let's move up to the right.
Oh, thirty, you might be right, uh I think it is thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
We got thirty-five thousand, and if we move to the right
No, I've got thirty.
Thirty. Thirty?
Yeah, cause it's five thousand off the Safford House. Five thousand off the Heritage Museum and then ten thousand off the Safford House electric gate, was there something else that we missed, Mission Receiver?
I was just taking fif- five thousand off the twenty, or the Heritage Museum, I think it was. Which gave us fifteen, so I I don't know, maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, it's thirty, either way.
Thirty.
Fifteen, five and ten.
Now, if we move to the right, we got a request from the homeless leadership, five thousand dollars. Uh we have a representative now, Commission Donovan.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I will. Uh the Homeless Leadership Board does a lot of great work for our county, um this is something that we previously funded when we had a member um on their board. And then I think when we didn't have any repres- representation on the board, we took it off, um which makes sense. Um I am a representative on that board now, um I I really enjoy the work that we're doing around the county. Um something I would suggest, if we are considering this. Um and and again, I am advocating for giving them the five thousand dollars. I just think when we do give them it, if if that is the commission's decision, that we also accompany a li- a little letter with it that says um you know, ma- maybe lists the Shepherd Center and some other organizations that they could possibly work with to get some more North Pinellas uh activity. Because that's just one of the things that I I was surprised about when I joined the Homeless Leadership Board is how much of the focus is in South County or Central County. I mean, there's there's not enough work being done in North County, and that's for Tarpon Springs, Palm Harbor, Dunedin. Um really, North County as a whole. So I I mean, I am advocating for five thousand dollars, I think they do great work um in in ending not just homelessness, but chronic homelessness. Um which is a lot of times the homelessness that the community sees. Uh but I would definitely advocate for also accompanying the funding with a letter. Um detailing whether it's working with the Shepherd Center, uh whether it's expanding the cold night shelters in the winter or something like that. Because I think they can be doing more in North County, and I am advocating for that, but it would mean a lot more if it came from our entire board in the form of a letter, similar to what we sent the county uh regarding Fred Howard Park.
And just a lot of people don't know, they are in charge now of correlating the 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 cold night shelters and stuff, that group is now in charge of coordinating locally with here with the cold night shelters, with our Tarpon Cold Night Shelter.
And I just, can I say something? You know, uh in answer to you, I was I was on that board for four years and really they start stop funding, we stopped funding and they started not having as much focus on North County. But I think what would be great is if we got some kind of reports from you, uh either quarterly or however you wanted to do it. Um I used to do that and I went to New York, uh the to speak on on uh this the subject and mental illness, um and I was invited Susan to speak, to come and and give us the reports of the the figures. Uh you know, when they when they did their count, so that's just a suggestion because it's good for the rest of us to know what's going on, yeah.
Sure.
But as far as the budget and five thousand dollars, everybody's okay with that?
Mayor, I'm I'm not okay with it right now, um and here's my thought process behind it. Uh Commissioner Donovan brought up a point of this board focuses more Clearwater South, right, and not North Pinellas. Um so I'm happy that cannot, um Commissioner Donovan's up there advocating for us, but if they're not really paying attention to North Pinellas, I mean, we can potentially put these funds to use somewhere in our own town, right? To address the homeless issue, if it's if it's putting the funds over to the police department to help out with the homeless uh outreach that they have there, I'm not sure what that would look like, um but I I'm a, I'm totally for finding some way to help out the homeless, the chronic homeless, the people that are falling hard times, but I don't think granting this board down in South Pinellas that really doesn't show, I haven't seen at least, that they care about Tarpon Springs um is the wisest decision right now to do in our budget. And as a reminder too, the the residents pay on their millage rate to the county over nine million dollars a year. And it's, I think the county's responsible responsibility to fund this from their perspective. So the taxpayers of Tarpon Springs are already paying this to the Pinellas County. I don't think it's something that the taxpayer should be paying a second time in Tarpon Springs.
Could I say?
I agree with Commissioner Carr.
You do, okay. Uh well, we do have a voice on the board now and and I think when we did before, um they did pay a little more attention to North County, but they're also taking care of our uh cold shelters, um so I just feel like if we have a voice now, they may concentrate more on on North County. Um of course, the county spends, pays a lot for its homeless leadership and and so do other cities. Uh but I, you know, I I agree that we should give them something.
You know, uh Commission Carr and Vice Mayor have a good point, but at the same time, like we now have a representative, hoping that we're gonna get service up this time. Uh I would not support five thousand, but if we could drop it down to uh maybe two or three thousand, I'd be okay with it.
I'm fine with doing that, if I may speak, but I would also say that not funding it, now it obviously puts Commissioner Donovan in a little bit of a pickle, right, but not funding it might give him a stronger voice to say to the board, look, my board doesn't see anything from your board, that's why we did fund. I just might think, but I mean, obviously I don't wanna put him in the position position to do that, but it might give you a little bit more, you know, negotiating power as well, but clearly we could find a common.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Carr and um Vice Mayor make a great point. Um again, I just believe as a representative of the Homeless Leadership Board that um, you know, we give them a chance with five thousand this year. Um I can constantly keep keep annoying them and keep reminding them about North County, um and and hopefully maybe even come up with some ideas of my own on how how we can help North County. Uh but again, if that's the board's decision, that's the board's decision.
Yeah, well, that's why we're here to discuss it. Yeah, well, that's why we're here to discuss it, but I will support three thousand dollars for that one.
Um, I'm still no right now.
Okay.
Um, if the board would support three thousand, then that's what I'll go with as well.
Commissioner Seaver. Okay, Commissioner Carr, back to you.
Do we need it four or five, everybody? Okay, look. I may, okay, if I could add that we need to add a letter like Commissioner Co- uh Donovan brought up earlier. That we'd like to see more of emphasis and somehow how the um, the board could work with their homeless outreach and I'm not sure if there's some uh stronger ties there. And work with our um uh cold night shelters and also help coordinate with um our soup kitchens, to lack for a better word, yes. I mean, it's important that we put a letter along with this ex- expecting some help in North Pinellas. Because North Pinellas is just as much as Pinellas County as South Pinellas is as well, so uh I could support the three thousand tonight with that.
Yeah, that letter's necessary.
We dropped the three thousand dollars. We have another request from the neighborly services. This is uh Mills on Will. Uh, they haven't put any number here on that, but I tell you what, this is a very good service. I do deliver this once though. And it's pretty needed. It's really uh very useful and very uh needed. Delivering meals to the old people. And they, as you see, they didn't, they didn't put any amount. So I need some ideas on that.
What would you suggest?
I will say three thousand dollars.
Three thousand?
Yeah. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, can I, yeah, can I just get some clarification on some, some of these other unfunded things first? Not that, you know, a couple grants is gonna make us or break us, but. If I could, uh Ron, on some of these other things that say additional commission requests, like on the SpongeDogs facade grant, thirty to forty-five, that's not been funded, correct? No, it's not, no, it hasn't. Same thing with other items but not funded. Sunset Beach, the citywide playground, which I don't necessarily think we need. Or in the decorative lights, those things are also not funded, correct? Correct. Okay.
And again, with the sand, we're thinking we may be, have the opportunity of getting the dredge sand, so again, that's one we should probably.
We're probably gonna be talking about this later, but I think a lot of the uh playgrounds, uh they're not only in bed, we need to see how many of them they need to be repaired this year. And how many next year and all that.
Yeah, I mean, we can get to it whenever you want. What I was gonna say on that since you brought it up is that a lot of them, we've been pretty diligent about and are in really good shape, so I don't see, I mean.
Not all need to be repaired.
I don't think so by any means, I mean. And I go to them first.
Yes, you do now.
Can I bring up a point?
Yeah.
I know I wasn't at the budget meeting when you all discussed lowering the military. Um.
Can we go back into the uh neighborly?
Yeah, I was just saying, there's funding there. Um, and and I don't know if we wanna discuss it now or later, but. Uh, all these things we could fund if we left the military where it is. I feel like there might be a recession coming and why? Why give our, our citizens two dollars and us lose ninety thousand? Uh, I just don't think it makes any sense and I'm, I'm, I'm very opposed to it.
I am strongly supporting that though.
I, I know, but I'm saying there's eighty, there's ninety thousand, eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five that we're going to lose. To, you know, what's the reason for us doing it? Is it political? I, I just don't understand the reasoning behind it. Uh, and I'm, I'm just against it because we could fund some of these other things if we left the military where it is. These things that are all unfunded here. Uh, so I just wanted to tell you how I feel about it.
Respectfully, I disagree with you because the uh the property values have been increased, I think to six percent.
Oh, I know, but what if we have a recession next year and and uh things decrease? Are we gonna raise the military? I mean.
I don't see recession coming up. I'm not the economist, but I don't see that coming.
Mayor, if I may, um I would support two thousand to neighborly. Uh, I think it's important what Mayor, uh, I'm sorry. Um, Commissioner Seaver brought up earlier about having some type of uh guidelines of how the city's gonna give money away. Uh, or grant money to nonprofit organizations. I think it's important to have some type of application process to be able to see what, excuse me. To be able to see their full funds, to be able to see what their total administration cost is. Um, these are all important things when you're evaluating. Uh, when you wanna give personally, I think to nonprofits, um at least myself, I would wanna evaluate what's the administration cost, actual. Funds that are given out ratio. Is it above thirty percent? What's the national average? If it's above thirty percent, you might be looking at a mismanaged fund and at that point they're, they're spending more money amongst their board than actually giving out to the people that actually need it, right? I don't know what that number looks like, but I think it's important to have some type of criteria in here. Um, so it does make it a little more difficult just to say, well, we've got a nice letter from them to do some nice things, which is. Being my, I have grandparents that are elderly and live in the area. I totally understand the need and I completely support. Anything we can do to help the, the more mature population that are um live amongst us. Um. So, um, I just, I, I do think it's important, but at the same time, I think we have to be careful in how much we, we really um decide to. Put forward, right? He's making fun of my mature population?
I thought that was good.
Definitely could sound.
Yeah, no, God likes it too.
So you proposed the two thousand?
That's what he said.
We hear a two and a three.
Uh, I go with two, I really don't have a problem.
I think two's good. It leaves us a thirty number if we're.
Commissioner Seaver?
That's right.
You supporting two?
Yeah.
Commissioner Donovan?
I'll support two.
Okay, we'll go with two. The other request that we have is this family center of definite. One thou- they requesting a thousand dollars. I didn't know it. I haven't heard anything about them before. Mark, have you?
I haven't heard anything until the letter that I included in your backup, but they say they do, you know, they do hearing for seniors. I, I imagine they heard about our. Our interest in senior activities lately and says that, but we haven't heard, I, I don't remember hearing.
They have a place in Tarpon or no?
No, I don't think so. They're countywide.
Did you say their place?
That's the first I've.
I asked if there was a place in Tarpon, but evidently no.
All, all I have is the same view that the first I've seen from and and I attached.
I didn't even know such an organization was existed on that. And with the senior information center, they never gave us any lyrics.
How to prove it?
That sounds like a no.
Um, yeah, I think something that um kinda goes a long way, especially when you're applying um for money with really any organization is. Is really just showing up and and making a pitch or at least being present in the community. Um, and and again, perhaps they are, but uh I quickly Googled them, um, you know, when I, when I saw this and I just don't know that. There's any specific Tarpon Springs um outlets that they have. Um, I know they weren't at any city meetings or anything like that. Um, or at least none of their representatives reached out to us. Um, so I guess I, I would want more information on this before I felt comfortable giving them um any money.
It is a county organization, so.
What is it?
It's a county organization. Based out of Largo.
That's a no?
I'm out.
Alright.
Services in Pinellas County. Uh, no, I don't think so.
Twenty-five thousand.
No, we got thirty.
No, twenty-five, no.
You subtract, you did three for homeless leadership network and two for neighborly.
Right, so that evened out. And we still got thirty-two. No, I had thirty-two.
We only start with thirty.
Homeless leadership and neighborhood balance itself. Oh, okay, you're right. I still got thirty.
Thirty, okay.
So there's twenty-five thousand dollars.
No, it's thirty. Oh, cause we funded, yeah, yeah. Sorry, forgot that wasn't funded yet. Yeah, yeah, we're at twenty-five. I'm with you.
Okay.
Just give more, we calculate. Okay, that's all we got, guys.
What about uh some of the funding for the facade grants? I think that's important. Honestly, dollar for dollar, I don't know how you can beat a facade grant.
Well, you know, we don't have facade grants on the docks and I've been working with a, a group of merchants who.
We did it at one time.
Yeah, we did at one time and and I think it was used by one person.
Think two, I think we had two.
But that's how the facade grants started out in the CRA too for a long time.
But, but it's continued in the CRA, but we have a, a lot of new merchants on the docks and. I've been meeting for, with them and they really want some improvements and um they're willing to pay for it if their landlord isn't. So, you know, I, I requested facade grants again, uh so that some of these people can take advantage of them.
As before, before it was a matching.
What, what else were you gonna say?
So, you know, we talked about forty-five thousand and six, six different people, fifteen thousand each, or we can't do that. Uh, lower it to uh to only five people, but.
That's why I was getting to these numbers. I'll explain the numbers to you.
But you know, we don't have it.
On the old one, it was seventy-five hundred matching, you know, they put in up to seventy-five hundred, we'd match. You don't have to use that. Using that number. Um, for instance, right now with a twenty-five, you could do three at that, which is twenty-two thousand, five hundred. Um, if you lower it to five thousand and matching, obviously you could do five if you use the money that left. But you gotta figure out what the matches, the number, the thirty to the forty-five was funding, um, four of them at thirty. Or six of them at forty-five, or three of them would be twen- twenty-two thousand, five hundred. And if those three are taken and go up and like last time, if they do those, then you know, you could always look as a board to finding money to, if they ended up being popular, so.
What are you proposing, Commissioner?
Well, oh, Mayor, did you say Mayor? Sorry. Uh, well, they really want the forty-five because there's. You know, they're thinking they have at least six people at fifteen thousand a grant, um, you know, and matching it uh seventy-five each. But if we can't do that, I, you know, I would say we should at least do uh thirty, I mean.
I'm in for more versus less, but what are you thinking in terms of what the, what the grant itself is? How much?
The grant would be fifteen thousand, so six of them.
Seven-five hundred and a.
Seven-five hundred a piece, you know.
What if you drop it to five thousand? A ten thousand dollar facade facelift.
Same as we do in the CRA area, correct?
Right, because, I mean, with, with seventy-five hundred a piece, um, they might be able to do awnings or painting or. You know, not major improvements, but at least there's so many awnings that are down on the docks and and so much pain.
Ten thousand dollars a building is a significant, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty good upgrade to front of a building, isn't it?
But I think it's gonna be a very good investment for the city as well.
Can't beat it.
Yeah.
Can't beat it.
Can't beat it because, you know, this is an attraction area. Uh, it brings a lot of tourists.
I sup- I support it completely, yeah.
I'm in too.
Right now, you can fund three. If you find five thousand and take something else out, you can support the four at thirty thousand.
I mean, I'm in for the forty-five thousand. We just have to, we would have to find.
Go back to, you, you, you go back to the other side.
Okay.
So right now, we got twenty-five thousand, right?
Yeah, right now, we got twenty-five thousand. It seems like the fund into this project, right? Everybody's good with the grants, putting the mon- the balance of the money into the grant?
Uh, I, I've got one item that I'd like to discuss, um, that we've talked about in years past a couple times and that's about the. The signages at our city parks and our city buildings and um I, I made a presentation a couple times and discussed that. We have about nineteen different signs amongst the parks and city buildings and that there's really no uh continuity across all parks and buildings. Um, that are owned by the city and that is an important part, I think, of the city to have the same um sign across. The most, the most similar signs that we have are the older gray signs that are painted. They're like the old dockings that they put in and. And they've really served their time, uh and have um done well over the years, but these need to be updated and that's something that we've talked about as a board and we've come to an agreement and pass boards. That we need to move forward and I talked to the city manager that it might be an opportunity that um. Because of the masonry is become more and more expensive to have an outsource to do that, maybe we can use our staff in-house. To build the base of the signs and then hire a sign company to finish the decorative part of the sign that you would slip in to the um. To the sign of, for instance, the city clerk's office. If you drive by it faster than twenty-five miles per hour, it might blow over. So just be careful when you take off tonight, but we need to replace these because they're starting to deteriorate and they're wooden, they're rotting. Um, so I don't know where this would come from and and maybe it could, we could look at it from a um code enforcement funds or part of beautification project is. If we get more code enforcement funds for twenty-twenty um that come in, that we could look at allocating some funds over to that. Um, cause I think it's an important thing. First, the aesthetics of our building, we do use a, a nice brick that matches City Hall or the brick that matches the fire department. Um, out at Station Seventy-One, uh, we can do it in-house to have more of those um done and we can replace more of these at a quicker pace. Um, over this year. So that would be one item I would, I would like to suggest. Completely support the.
That we were talking about earlier, who kinda left it in the middle?
What's that?
The, the sponge dog.
Yeah, I'm coming back to that because we're talking about funding all the, all the available funds, so then at that point, there's no more discussion if we fund it completely with available funds, right?
But we still do have one more, the city lights, uh, that, that's not funded, don't we, down here at the bottom?
So.
Of lighting and signs, we're, we're, we still haven't talked about that.
We could go back and, well, we didn't.
We can talk about with this for the CRA district too. I mean, that's a lot of that.
We also don't know where the forty thousand went from the uh shuffleboards and the cemetery perpetual care. Car, right?
Cemetery, we can't spend, that's only in cemetery funds and then uh shuffleboard courts, wasn't that?
Soapboard was for recreation impact. Use that to go up and pay, use that fifteen thousand or whatever it was to go up and make the difference. In for the Pinellas Trail.
But the next item is fifty thousand for decorative lighting, signs and other beautifications, so.
Yeah, I think that's that part discussion that could fall within the CRA, uh, because most of those areas fall within the CRA area. Um, if you're looking all along Pinellas Avenue and then Tarpon Avenue, that all is really the areas that we would be focusing on. If you have another area that you're thinking about, like the sponge docks.
We need to focus on doing something with the docks too, not just.
I agree with you in that aspect, but.
Um, there, we need signage, you know, desperately, they've been talking about these business owners, some. Some directional signage on Athens and the west end of, of uh Dota Canays where uh those shops are not seen. Uh, and I've visited many cities and taken pictures. I was just at.
I've done the same thing.
Winter Park, uh, of what they've done. Um, and all of them have directional signs for, for their businesses. Now along Dota Canays, you don't really need them, but on, on the corner of Athens and Dota Canays and on Pope and Dota Canays.
Yeah.
You definitely need some directional signs to show what's down there, that, that either one of those areas.
Mark, don't we have a, a in-house person that makes signs now? So what's a decorative pole cost? Maybe six hundred bucks, maybe, maybe three hundred dollars, like a, like a stop sign pole? So, I mean, if we get, if we could spend two thousand dollars on decorative poles and then we have our in-house sign person make the signs.
What I've suggested, talking to Mark, is that uh the city pay for the poles and the businesses pay for their individual signs.
If it's a business sign to direct people down the way, the city can't pay for that thing. They would have, the business would have to pay.
Yeah, similar to other discussions that we've had in the past too, is I brought this up about downtown and looking at putting something along the bike trail. Lemon Street, as you come up Safford, if it's over by Ultra Nineteen, it can be generic, right? You could say restaurants. Um, or boutiques or Shell Shop or, oh, that's a bad example because there was actually a store named Shell Shop in the SpongeDogs. Um, it, restaurants, I mean, whatever it may be, and you, you just point that direction to where it's, it encompasses a lot of different things.
I understand what you're saying, but these business owners are, are like for five years have been asking for signs with their names on them, just like Safety Harbor and Dunedin. And Winter Park and um so many other cities in uh in, in Florida. Uh, who have their own businesses on there and they pay for their own sign and use their own logo in some, some.
But again, that's a whole discussion because, for instance, if you look at most of them, there's four or five just to do Athens Street, which we wanna talk about. I think there was sixteen or seventeen businesses and you gotta decide how you do that on a pole, something like that. Remember, I think Safety Harbor limits it. If you look at Safety Harbor, it's the four, maybe five, so how do you tell on a street like in Athens?
Each side of the street, so you have like five on one side and six on the other or whatever.
Regardless of whatever it comes to be.
But again, the first thing you need to do is.
We can get the pole, right? I mean, if the pole's three hundred bucks and we supply three or five poles, it's fifteen hundred dollars and then regardless of the city. Provides the signs or if it goes to the businesses, we could hash that out further. I mean, the city can make it pretty cheap, I think, for the signs and if the. Businesses wanna supply it and then pay the city, I'm not really sure how that would work, so.
A lot of money.
It's not gonna cost a lot of money, so, but it's an important part to have in the downtown and the SpongeDogs areas and if that's fifteen hundred dollars, we could allocate. I mean, that's fifteen hundred dollars.
You also gonna have some people who are not gonna like that look down there.
Or you look at it from working dollars.
Meeting to hear the people who.
Please, everybody.
Probably aren't gonna like that. Cause there will be, there is a group that's probably not gonna like that, but again, we're on.
But every city's doing it, so. Commissioner Seaver requested, let's go back to that, okay? So, uh, we have twenty-five thousand dollars left.
You can fund three grants right now.
At seventy-five hundred.
At seventy-five hundred.
Or you could reduce it to five thousand, you have more grants you could, you can, you can do, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you'd be able to get more grants, more buildings updated. If you do it to five thousand dollars, you'd have five grants.
I'm not sure that that many people will take advantage of it. That's why I suggested the forty-five at seventy-five hundred, uh.
You know, the last time.
Fifteen thousand each, but. So, a lot of people didn't know about it and one person did all the work themselves. So, a lot of people didn't know about it, and one person did all the work themselves, like, spent over a hundred thousand dollars because he didn't use the process correctly. Uh, you have to apply, and, and this has been explained to them. You have to apply in advance, you have to do the right application process to be qualified for the grant, so, you know, that needs to, to happen when they, you know, do this, but there's, uh, quite a few on Athens Street, there's a new brewery going in on Athens Street. He's doing a lot of work, uh, there's, there's four new businesses on Athens. Uh, and they kinda feel like hibiscus, you know, it's like, okay, nobody knows we're here. Um, so, and if, if the owners don't wanna do the improvements, they're willing to do the improvements, because that's the problem, is the owner's not wanting to.
You don't see the lack of support here, you've got the support behind this, I think, amongst the board, I, I haven't heard from Commissioner Donovan, but I think overall, y- you've got it. It's just trying to figure out what the numbers are gonna be, and how many grants you want to be, being proposed here, overall.
Yeah, I, I absolutely support the Sponge Docks facade grants, but I agree with Commissioner Carr, and that I think if we could lower it and help more businesses, I would rather do that than have it be, you know, an increased amount and help less businesses, so. I would, I would be leaning more towards the five thousand dollars, um, and, yeah, I, I would do five. Um, I, I just think that the more businesses we can help down there, at least more businesses we can be available to help down there. Um, I, I think that's a lot better for the docks as a whole, rather than just having, you know, a few businesses that get it.
And I've got one more question, Ron, do you know if there's another five or ten thousand dollars that we could, um, move from the penny fund, or, um, into like, for instance, Stormwater, or, um, the Recreation Impact Fund? Is there another five to ten thousand dollars that we could?
You're talking about trying to move a, a project from one fund to the another, and no, I, I'm, we don't have any of those.
Not exhausted with doing what you said up top.
Yeah, the other thing is, un- unless you didn't wanna reduce the millage rate so far, if you just wanted to go to five point three eight, you know, so there's another seventeen thousand seven fifty-nine. Or if you went to five point three nine, you've got thirty-five thousand five eighteen, so.
We get the premise.
Yeah. You ain't gonna, I don't think we're gonna get a consensus on any of those, so.
Mayor. Should I propose something?
Yeah.
Okay. You, you basically have twenty-five grand to work with right now. We don't have more than that as it exists right now. So, I, I'm a proponent that, uh, you know, I think that there will be a little bit of a critical mass thing with the facade grant for, with the facade grants, just like there was in other areas of town, it started off low, and then it kinda took off. So, in an effort to have more than, than less grants to offer, I would agree with the five thousand. Uh, and then that would give you five, five, five people, and I mean, it would still be about ten thousand dollars worth of work, essentially, because it's a matching grant, so. I mean, I'm good with that right now.
You're in real estate, you're in real estate with five thousand dollars, and you will.
Well, it's more like ten, because it's a matching grant, so I mean, yeah, ten grand, ten grand goes a long way for sure.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, and the idea, you know, the idea is, is that it becomes more of a critical mass thing, because ultimately, you're gonna have more, the city is gonna have more reward if five people do it than if two people do it, right? Even though the numbers could potentially be the same on what amount of work has been spent, but if you have five storefronts versus two storefronts, I think it goes a little bit further.
It would look better, yeah.
And I would, just for the record, I would be a, a proponent to put more money in this fund, in the event that, you know, it did well, and we needed, uh, have more money for facade grants, because I do think dollar for dollar, I don't know how you can beat it from an economic development standpoint.
And remember, the budget is year-round, if by February, all five grants are used, we look at where we are in the budget and stuff, and the commissioner, hey, we've done the five, and there's two more applications out there, can we look where we are in February? Is there ten more thousand to offer? Two, we can always do that if those five get exhausted like we hope. You know, that'll be four, three, four, five, five months into the budget, who knows what came in less, or something like that? And hey, so the manager, find me ten more thousand, cause all five of those grants, and let's do six and seven. So, we can always do that, if those five are used up during the course of the budget year.
I hope we find, I hope we have five applicants too.
Me too.
Well, you know, like I said, there's a lot of new business owners, and they want things done, or they're gonna be coming to the commission meetings and, and yelling at all of us, because they've been talking about having these things done for a long time, and, and I, you know, I'm trying to, you know, help them.
Encourage them to come to the meetings too, because I, I appreciate that.
I, I do, but I just don't want a, a lot of people yelling, you know, so, you know, whatever we can do to, to help them out with signage, with lighting, with, uh, with facade grants, uh, I think it's, it's, it's very important, because people come to Tarpon Springs to go to the docks.
It sounds like you got the consensus of the board behind you, so.
We got consensus, five, five thousand dollars, five applicants.
So, ten thousand each.
Five thousand each. Well, that's down to zero.
The grants are ten thousand each.
The grants are five thousand, and then it matches up to five, so it'd be total of ten thousand would be investing, yes.
Five of five.
Okay.
Hey, good job.
For now, we're down to zero, guys.
Okay, so that last item was decorative lighting, signs, and. Fifty thousand?
Got our budget.
Now we're ready for September fourth, huh?
Yes, sir.
September fourth.
So, we're not, we're not gonna discuss that last item? It's fifty thousand, it's not.
Again, you'd have to go up and pull something else from the, the list up here, and then you.
We don't have any more, uh, available funds unless we create some for the, for the.
I know, but we need that decorative lighting, I feel.
So, if I can make a recommendation, uh, I, I brought up a, the idea earlier too, um, I'm completely behind decorative lighting. Um, I know we don't want to, um, we don't want to rely and expect that the city's gonna see, and I hope that we never have to see a code enforcement dollar ever again come into the city of Tarpon Springs. But the realization is that there's plenty of foreclosure still that are happening, and there's houses that banks are owning, um, and that we could see additional funds coming that way. Uh, I've, I've sent the city manager a list of items, how, and how the city could potentially allocate these funds, and this could be an opportunity later on in the year, if we, as a city, or if the city receives more money through code enforcement to allocate towards some of these items, um, overall, and then, uh, I get, another good example could be the cultural center plaster repair and painting of interior, if that falls under twenty-five thousand, there's a few more thousand dollars, and then we could squeeze out of it later in the year, but I, I support, um, anything we could do on the Sponge Docks to make it more attractive at night, to encourage more people to be down there at night as well, so. Uh, I think there's an opportunity later in the year, but right now, it's just, we've exhausted all the available dollars we had.
And, and the sponge docks still looking nice too, on light.
This decorative lighting item is citywide, so it includes downtown, so you'd have to find money.
So downtown, we have plenty of money, uh, for downtown, and that's, that's an item we could have for, for the discussion. Um, I think I've gave some pretty good examples of what we could do. I'm looking forward to that workshop, by the way.
I had one more question, Mayor. Uh, Ron, last time we spoke about the, uh, having a list of asset sale items?
Are you talking about the auction items?
Yeah, any kind of asset sale, I mean, whether it's machinery, or whatever the case may be.
Yes, we're currently updating that list, right? We just got some anyways, we wanted to update it with those.
Beautiful, thank you.
Yeah, we did, just did the last one for this budget year and stuff, so, we'll get, we'll get him that report as soon as, soon as the final.
Yeah.
I think reviewing that list can be just as important as any, you know, other budgetary item that we do, I mean, ultimately, for our benefit to know where, you know, some of the monies are going, and what we're getting on some of, like I said, some of the assets that we have.
No money goes back into the agro farm, it goes to wherever it was.
It depends, yes, it depends on where the equipment was purchased, it's mostly general fund and water and sewer fund, maybe stormwater.
And there's another item like Commissioner Carr's, like, if he figures we're gonna get twenty-five thousand in selling property back, and we end up selling forty thousand, and there's fifteen thousand there that you could designate for one of the other projects, almost the same as code enforcement or the unassigned. Um, so that, that, along the lines of the same thing Commissioner Carr is talking about, as long as it's excess of what he's budgeted, cause what he's budgeted is throughout this budget that you see now, but if there's excess, if we get a bank that comes in with a fifty thousand dollar settlement that puts us over there, then that is extra money you can allocate, um, towards what you wanna allocate towards, as the budget year goes long, and we see, and we see that.
Mayor, if you can add a comment? Okay, uh, a couple of things I just wanna readdress is the CRA workshop, um, city manager, if we can make sure that's scheduled, uh, sometime in October.
I wanna try to get, I can tell you, I was gonna tell you tomorrow night, but I might as well tell you now. I wanna try to finish up the final workshop to go over the sign code for the off Tuesday, October first. If that's avail, and then if, if that's okay, and that one's settled, then, of course, we can always go another night, but I propose, you know, any of the off Tuesdays that we have, um, that we can do a work session, so. Again, if, if we're agreed on the first, then, of course, we got the fifteenth, or the twenty-ninth, where we could.
What's the seventeenth look like, is it, I mean, on September? It's an off Tuesday, right?
Oh, that's the budget, that's your second, but like, your last public hearing on the budget, that's why we can't use.
Do we change those meetings in September? Cause the, that's the third week in September, I think, right?
Yeah.
The second and fourth we meet, or is it the?
That's a regular.
Second and third.
Second and fourth, you know, the commission meeting is second and fourth.
Right, but I'm looking at the seventeenth of September is a third Tuesday.
That's your final public hearing on the budget.
Okay.
Gotta have that one.
You have the four?
That's where we just come here, and, okay, understood, miss, okay, sorry, thank you. It's not a regular commission meeting, okay, got it.
Not a regular commission meeting.
So, more likely it's gonna be October first, then, huh?
First is the, is the sign code, we need to, we need to finish, finalize, and that's gonna be a rather extensive full meeting, probably to, to finalize what we wanna do, to prepare the ordinance for the sign code. That, that'll be a workshop, the second workshop to follow up from the first one. And that's where you'll make the final decision, we'll need to stay there until we make the final decisions, so we can start preparing the ordinance and preparing that to go forward. So, that's probably an item, we're not gonna be able to add anything to the meeting, and that's gonna be a full.
Okay.
A full work session for that item.
Mr. Licorice, when are we gonna be talking about the five-year plan?
That can be on one of the work sessions, those open Tuesdays we talk about.
Okay, because we want that, you do, you put that in.
We could do a CRA five-year plan.
Big garage and stuff like that.
I think that goes together, I think those two could go together, uh, in discussions, um, in that aspect. I mean, the CRA overlaps with the parking garage, and if it's a five-year capital plan, then it could overlap there too. That's just one example, right?
Well, there are some other projects that I, I'd like to, uh, talk about for the five year.
I'd like to talk about.
Huh?
I have something I'd like to talk about.
Don't get me wrong, I've got, I'm right there with you guys, so. Um, I've got another item too, Mayor, and, um, just as a, um, city manager and city clerk, this is nothing personal. Um, if we're giving raises to the, uh, a staff member, it, it's always good to make sure that we are doing the evaluations, am I correct in that? So, if you're giving a, um, a, a department head a raise, or a, um, merit raise of some sort, you give them a, um, some type of evaluation. Last year, we had discussions that it, it should be written, um, as it is in the contract, and I believe charter, I can't remember off the top of my head. Um, so, we talked about doing a workshop for that, obviously, we've come in, and we're in August right now, and we didn't have one yet, so. We've got to come up with some idea, as being Mark's direct report, um, he needs to have some type of information back from his commissioners, he's responsible as his boss, right? Um, if we're moving forward to give the city manager and the city clerk, um, a merit raise, which is proposed in the budget, it's us as a commission, as a board's responsibility to make sure that we meet with these individuals to give them their annual reviews. Uh, it's better for the board, it's better for the, the staff themselves to understand how we feel, good, bad, or indifferent, whatever it is, uh, I mean, reviews aren't bad, they're, they're good things to, um, encourage, to coach, to look for opportunities in the future. Um, is there communication issues? Uh, so, I don't know if we wanna do this individually, if we wanna do it publicly, or how it should go. Um, obviously, we've run into a, a timing situation here, cause I think we talked, uh, um, the last time this was brought up, we talked about it being in August of some sort, so. I just wanna bring that up before we close the meeting out, because it does pertain to the budget in some aspects, because it's a, a merit increase that I believe is scheduled. Am I wrong, and if that's, is that scheduled, am I wrong, do you know?
What part?
The merit increase?
Well, yeah, that, that's in.
That's part of the budget, right?
You're gonna see that tomorrow night, and, and you're gonna see it tomorrow night in the salary and waiting classification.
That's what I thought, okay.
In, in regards to evaluation, we usually do that at the end of the year, I usually do mine in October, November, sometime, somewhere there. But it's up to the individual, it, it's up to the, every commission, how much to do.
It, it's not up to the, it's not up to the commissioners, it's in actually in the contract of the city manager. But if it's our responsibility, if there's a contract between the city manager and the city, and we're elected, it's our responsibility to follow the contract, so we have to go by what the contract says.
When to do that, in my opinion.
Yeah, that's, well, I mean, that's your opinion as a mayor, but since we all have the same vote and the same, I guess, value of an opinion, we need to come up with a consensus, because the last time, we had, came up with a consensus of the board saying it would follow the fiscal, um, that would be wise to do it in August, September time, because that's when the fiscal year starts, right? And that's when raises fall into place. I don't feel comfortable, um, giving a merit raise unless there's actually a consensus across the board saying as bosses, who, which, I mean, there lack a better word, we're responsible to direct Mark as a board. And we're responsible for the city clerk who reports to us, and we're responsible for the city attorney. Um, and they'll, uh, city attorney has a contract, we're not giving him a raise, because it's contractually, it shows the rates, but as city manager, I'm not trying to make a, a large, uh, mountain out of an anthill here, but I just wanna make sure we're following what the contract states, and I don't have it in front of me, but this is something that's important to talk about, because it's our duty as elected officials to make sure that it's done. Um, and if we're doing the review after he's already gotten his merit raise, and we're kinda putting the, the, I guess, the cart well before the horse then, for the next year.
Maybe we could have the paragraph in which the contract speaks to what the commissioner's talking about to familiarize ourselves tomorrow, cause I'm not familiar with what he's talking regarding that paragraph. I mean, with that.
Yeah, I just, like I said, nothing against you, Mark, nothing against the board as themselves, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page, because the last time we had discussions about this, and it's, it's just important that we get it done, because there was a contract in place, and it's a duty and a responsibility that we have as commissioners on the board to do that.
I hear what the commissioner's saying, but I gotta, I've gotta see it, I've never seen it in the, in the contract before, cause I mean, to your point, Mayor, what's the big deal, do your evaluation, you wanna do the evaluation? Don't do the evaluation, but I mean, if it says it somewhere to where the commission is obligated, right? Then, that maybe is a different story. I mean, don't get me wrong, my evaluation has always been with Mark one-on-one, it's not a big deal, it's not, you know, I mean, that's how I feel comfortable. I'm not disagreeing with you on how it should be done, but I'm just saying, I'm not familiar in a different way to do it, you know what I mean? So. Let's see what it says. Any other comment?
Uh, yes, Mayor, this is something that, um, maybe Mr. City Manager, um, or City Clerk could answer. Uh, I, I haven't been following real close the past couple of weeks with our charter committee, but I do believe that was an initial topic that they discussed, was possibly having a written review, um, of the city manager, like a written annual review. Did, do we have a status on that, did they shut, shut that down, or?
Well, first of all, I don't know why that's a discussion with them, cause I don't think that's part of what the charter committee could be doing, but she's been attending all of them.
Yeah, they did go back and discuss it a little bit today, um, however, um, there again, it says in, Mark has a contract, and it says that it should be a written review. Today, they were trying to see, um, you could correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, they were trying to see if it should be in public, one-on-one, but I think the contract says that it should be written. I think where it was brought up in the past was that some commissioners didn't do written evaluations, they did verbal one-on-one kind of evaluations and not written. I think that was the whole thing, and they didn't go any much further than that, other than we're still, you know, it's in the contract, but they didn't vote, and.
Can I add something to that? I know when we had this discussion last year, we talked about changing the form and simplifying it, because the form that we currently have, where we're writing evaluation, is, is kind of outdated. Uh, so, we did talk about looking at what other cities use, were there forms for evaluation, and thinking about changing, uh, ours, and I don't know where that went.
I, I think, uh, all three of ours are different, and they discussed it before, but I mean, that's up to the board, but each one of us have a different type of evaluation versus what type the city has for the regular employees.
Right, have we looked at simplifying it like we said? With the last board?
So, uh, this is kind of a unique situation, because we're all responsible for, um, making the evaluations. So, I don't know who we would task to update the evaluation forms except ourselves for this. So, if there's any ideas behind that, I, I would say, we'll just go ahead and make them, uh, in a memorandum of some sort. Um, but if I'm wrong, I, I don't know if we could task the city manager to come up with his own review, um, structure of some sort, or the city clerk to do that as well, so, um, I'm kinda stuck with that one.
When we discussed it, uh, we were gonna compare some of the other cities', uh, evaluation reports and, and decide what we, which way we were gonna go.
Have you reviewed the evaluation that is the city manager? Have you reviewed lately?
The last one I did was October last year, I think.
Yeah.
Or November last year, yeah.
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 I mean, it's kind of lengthy, but it's got all the information that you need to, for it. It's got all the different fields and how you evaluate it. It's kind of lengthy, though.
It's, it's long, that's why I was saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of it just like check, like grades one, two, three, four, something along those lines. And it's good just to put notes in there too, instead of just giving like a box of one, two, three, four. And if you feel it's not applicable, then it's just, we'll just put NA next to it. And if there's areas for us to increase, then let's talk about it amongst the board and or bring it up or send a memorandum, like I said, and we could add it to everyone's evaluation.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a strong believer in the written reviews. I, I just think it's the best at holding people accountable. Not just the city manager, but us as well. I just think it's the most transparent. Again, that's something that I want to see the, in, in the contract, I guess, if we can get a follow-up email on that. But I'd also want to see, I guess, the form. I've, I've never seen it, the form for, for managerial reviews. And if it's not up to par, I mean, one of us can send an email or a memorandum of some kind compiling a bunch of the other cities and even just regular, even private practice reviews and just kind of take what we like from them.
Well, again, the evaluation form, it has every field that is necessary to be. I agree with the commission, it's kind of long, but it's all the fields that you need and I think to me, it makes more sense when you, you know, when you verbally, I mean, when you write down actually what you really think and how you evaluate. Sometimes just look in the, you know, A, B, C and D, but doesn't give you all the stuff that you need, just to write it down. And you can say these, you know, things that you need to work on, things that you need to improve, things that it's doing better well and all that.
Yeah, I just brought it up because the last board had recommended that, so I didn't know if we were gonna look at it again or not.
But honestly, you know, if you want to make it, if somebody wants to take the responsibility or Mr. Licorice, if you want to look and see what the other cities are using.
I prefer not to do mine. Again, all says written, you write one sentence, I evaluated him and he passes doing that. Because you're not gonna get any complaints from me on my ten-year-old contract that you haven't done it. Those are preferred to do it verbal. And some of you do it every week, you verbally evaluate me. I don't care what y'all do with me, you know, as far as the evaluations and stuff, but don't hold this contract that it says in the contract because the simple written evaluation could be, I'll evaluate and he meets the standards to continue employment here. If anybody thinks the contr, the evaluation system is meaningful, you just go down south to the city of Dunedin and see what happened to the good evaluation he got and two months later with three votes, he was gone. So in the, in the city manager world, but for an accountability, whatever you want to do, but in my mind, I'm evaluated daily almost because all it takes is one meeting and three votes and you could have me at all fives and I'm gone and and look it down south at Dunedin and see what his evaluation was before two months later he was gone. So whatever you want to do with me, do it with me. But in the city manager realm, it, it only makes every commission meeting and you having three votes there. That's all the evaluation a city manager worries about.
Yeah, the commission, it works for the pleasure of the board, so it really does make a difference. But it's good to make an evaluation. I agree with that.
Mayor, could I just get some confirmation on the millage rate for the first public hearing is, is proposed tentatively for five point three seven?
That's how you're gonna advertise it.
Yeah. Okay, the resolution will read five point three seven and stuff.
It has to be ready for the public hearing the fifth, so.
If we don't have any more comments, guys, we're gonna close this meeting. Well, that concludes the budget work session. It's adjourned at seven thirty two P M.
Good deal.